Welcome you to the Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four work session. I have asked Commissioner Booker if he'd lead us in our invocation and Commissioner Swett if he'd lead us in the pledge. So if you'd stand with us, please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, come before you once again on bended knee, thanking you for this day. Thanking you, Heavenly Father, for this community. Thanking you for putting a hedge of protection around us, Heavenly Father. Seeing to it that no hurt, harm, or danger came to us through storms, Heavenly Father, whether they are natural or man-made. Heavenly Father, we ask that you be with us and guide us throughout this meeting today, Heavenly Father. That it would be all of you and none of us. We ask all these things that Christ may. Amen.
Amen. Please face the flag at attention. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Today on our work session, we have a presentation of the Georgia City County Management Association Community Award. And Mr. Gentry, we'll give the floor to you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eric Granados and myself went up to the Georgia City and County Management Association Spring Conference up in Athens this past week and had the honor of accepting a community program award for an innovative program or innovative idea that occurred within a community. We were recognized for our tidal pool floating bridge that we submitted as an innovative idea to solve a problem within a community. So we explained in our award nomination that with the idea that Commissioner Fendig, it came on some type of floating platform to cross these tidal pools. And so we took that idea, obviously, and ran with it and had a solution that I think met the community's need at the time. So, Mr. Chairman, I have distinct honor to present to you our award.
All right. And, uh, thank you, Tom. And, uh, Camp, uh, this, this actually is to your credit for your innovative ideas on bringing a solution to a, to a problem that we were struggling to overcome. So, thank you for that. And on behalf of Glen County and the Glen County Board of Commissioners, I want to say thank you for this presentation, and we will display it proudly.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think it's a good reward for team effort and, and shows how that works because I remember that the, uh, all the members of the Visitors Bureau approached us about an issue they had with tourists unable to get to the beach. We all had a big meeting. We went over to the DNR and I think, you know, that meeting there, we had to get the support of the DNR to be willing to not put us through the long permit process. And it just so happens, like you're in the field of construction that we talk about, lines in the boat. The idea wasn't anything brilliant. I got in the middle of the night. It was sitting right across from me on the other dock where today new boats are lifted up with those exact same flotation systems. And a dock builder is next to me, a charter of Kevin Desern. And I asked him if they, he felt like it could hold up in the wear and tear there and went back and researched it. And then we brought it to a team effort and announced it and the Visitors Bureau chipped in. Then I understand Tanya made the report up and submitted it in and John went up there and got it for us. So it was a great team effort, just collective as a group, the citizens and the communities. I appreciate the recognition, but it's a team effort.
All right. Thank you much. Out of number two today, we have the opportunity to hear from Commissioner Carter Enfinger from the Bryan County Board of Commissioners. He's going to present an impact plan that the Hyundai plant is having on his county and how that's going to bleed over into our county and see the opportunities there. So, uh, honorable Chairman Enfinger, thank you for being with us today.
Yeah, thanks for asking me to come down. You know, Commissioner Tossenson, we've kind of become friends over the last year. I'll kind of speak, if anybody has any questions, please feel free to ask as we go through it. I just wanted to come down, he wanted me to come in and say how we got, you know, the Hyundai metaplan, how we put everything together. And it was not an easy task. So I am the chairman of Bryan County. I'm also the chairman of the JDA, which is four counties, the Bullock, Bryan, Effingham, and Chatham County that came together and kind of pooled their, our money and resources together to make this happen. Kind of go back a little bit before, this is your, this is the counties that are in the JDA. So we formed that in two thousand and fifteen and the property was purchased in two thousand and twenty-one for the mega site. And it's about three thousand acres. And what we did is we got them, the state went in with us. We got some ARPA funds to do some project within the, within the site. But we formed that JDA, bought this property and there was at ninety-five and sixteen, if you remember, if you're from that area or have been to there, Mitsubishi plant was going to come there at one time, a long time ago. Of course, it did, it stayed on that land. They sold that land and then we purchased the property in two thousand and twenty-one. And as the mega site, it was sixty-two million dollars at the time, I think still is. It's the largest land purchase in the history of the state of Georgia. So we knew we needed something of regional significance to come to that site. We wanted it to take the whole site. We didn't want to split it up. So we knew it had to be a big manufacturer, OEM manufacturer. So we had several looks. A few years before this happened, Volvo came and it actually went to South Carolina, which was a blessing. So we had a little bit of, kind of, little bit what we needed to do. So when we got the property, we went ahead and rezoned everything and got it ready to go. That way, it was almost a shovel-ready project. And that was in May, two thousand and twenty-one. And I told one of the governors, people, I said, hey, we want something here as quick as we can get it. And almost a year to the date, they announced Hyundai. Hyundai came in and it's a great story. They came in, they visited that site. January was the first time they came and visited that site. In three months, or four, five months, excuse me, we had a deal done, really in about three, but we had it done. And you're going back and forth to Korea, you know, it's nighttime over there. So we had a lot of three AM phone calls with them, three in the afternoon over there. So it took a lot, a lot, a lot of doing, but we got it done. Now, this is the largest economic deal in the history of the state of Georgia, still is today. You know, Rivian was up, uh, in upper state, they've actually stopped that project right now. They put it on hold for a little while. And I think the difference between the two projects, we went ahead, we got everything zoned that we needed to be zoned. We got the JDA together and we worked just to make sure all, everything was done. So when somebody came in, it was ready to go. And Hyundai came in and as project blew, I believe it was, but the only way we knew was Hyundai. Jose came to town, they could visit, had a backpack on that said Hyundai on the strap. So we figured and they gave him that, they took a picture of it and they had a portrait made of that painted with it, would give him a gift to one that we announced. So anyway, that's kind of a little bit of background in it. But so Hyundai is a cute, I mean, again, it's three thousand acres, seven hundred and fifty acres are going to be under roof with this project. This is a groundbreaking in October. This is when the governor and Chairman Chang came over from Korea and everybody at the state level, Ossoff, Wernau, I think Buddy Carter's in there, a lot of folks from, from our local area. So it was good. I mean, it's a great project for us. This, this trailer, I'll kind of go through it. This tent we had it in, somebody called us and said, somebody's constructing a building on the site without a permit. It was an air-conditioned tent with two rooms, had carpet in. So that's, it was big. It was big, so.
We get those kind of calls.
Yeah, yeah. Like somebody's building something on the side, like, no, this is for the groundbreaking, this is a tent. So, and then, uh, so really with, with Hyundai came all these jobs. And I think that's where I think Glen County can get involved in this because this is, there's twenty-three suppliers that are coming here. Tier one suppliers are here, they're in different places. I don't have a click on it, but you can see the jobs, the number of jobs, she looked November, June, uh, it's called Joan, Georgia, came in, three hundred seventeen bay, body parts, electronics. So everything's going to be built for these cars, all electric, in our community, in our region. So again, I think Glen County is primed to get that because y'all are right down the coast. And sometimes some of these suppliers want to be about an hour to an hour and a half away. So they don't get a lot of visits from Korea, that when the Koreans come over, they kind of outside a little bit, they don't have time to come down. That's what they told us over in Alabama. But you can see, you know, the, the, all these jobs, Bullock County got, was that four hundred and fifty-six jobs? Seawan, that's over in Chatham, seven hundred and forty jobs. Seawan America, which is over in Effingham, that's seven hundred, another seven hundred and forty jobs. Over in Chatham County, it's PHA, they do the doors, tailgates, latches. And again, all these are big investments. And then in April, Seawan Auto, Georgia, it's over in Liberty County, so getting a little closer this way. And then in Bullock County, it's got a hundred and sixty new jobs. And then World Industries, they're heating the air-conditioning units for the cars. Again, that's in, that's in Lawrence County. So again, I, I really do truly believe that Glen County is in a great spot to get one of these other suppliers when they, when they start coming in a little more, you get some of these tier-two suppliers. Yes, sir.
You have any idea what other suppliers are potentially?
Yeah, there's going to be some other, you know, like, folks that do the tires, you know, I, I don't know if they're going to ship those in or what, but any kind of little supplier of these things, you know, and y'all are going to be shipping the cars out too. It's going to be half a many cars a year built. Eighty percent of those are going to be sold, sold in the United States, twenty percent are going to be shipped to Canada. So y'all will get a lot of that, I guess, through rail and truck down here. So that's going to increase your economy just by the number of cars, you know. They're going to software about three hundred thousand cars a year. They're going to build up to that. So really, that, that building, so it's under a year this month and they're having, they're programming robots right now. They have cars come off in October. It's pretty amazing. And so this was in November, first, uh, the first suppliers were announced. In August of twenty-three, LG Battery announced, so they're going to build the batteries on-site also in the back. So that was a two-point-six-billion-dollar investment. So right now, we're up to about seven point, uh, seven-point-six billion and about fifteen thousand jobs that we've created. So, and, um, and then this is the plant, this is the timeline of the plant. So December of twenty-four, the expected production, they actually moved that up. And I think we have a few picture slides here. This is what it looked like in January twenty-three. Not much there. I know they use twelve thousand gallons of fuel a day to clear this site and they work twenty-four-seven on it. We had to get with the EPD and EPA, you know, burn, burn piles per acre is out of three or four, they need seven or eight. So they got, they have three cement factories or companies that are good on-site, three or four of them on-site. This is May, you can see this is the building starting to go up, uh, July twenty-three. And then September twenty-three, and then November, a lot of the buildings are up. And this is December of twenty-three. I don't know if there's a pointer on here or not, I don't think so. But anyway, so you can see this building, this building here, is going to be the stamping building, you have welding, paint. And there's going to be an elevated assembly line between the buildings. It's going to be glass, so it looks like a walkway between buildings, but it's actually a elevated assembly line. It's pretty cool. And this is twenty, uh, that, and then to do this, they need, uh, they're going to need about six million gallons of water a day. When they get, when they, they hit their full potential. So what we had to do, um, this is located across from the mega site. It's our wastewater treatment facility that can treat five million, million gallons a day. So it's going to come from the site, they're going to pretreat it there, it's going to come under the interstate. And then we're going to pump it down to Savannah and we're building a plant now and they're going to pump it back to us in a couple of years, sooner from Savannah. And then we'll get rid of that fluid. So it's all funded by federal funds, state funds, and this should be done here in, uh, two thousand and twenty-five. So we're kind of, as, as they're building, we're kind of building, so we're kind of keeping lockstep with them to be able to meet their demands as time goes on. It's a lot, it's a lot of work. Uh, water, this is, uh, we're talking, you know, the EPD, uh, we're going to have some wells over in Bullock County because Bryan County is in what they call a yellow zone. We're limited to the amount of water that we can draw out of the aquifer. Bullock County across the interstate is not across the line, so we're working with EPD now. Hopefully, those permits will be signed soon. There's some stipulations that they put in place that we're working through right now. But they're going to have those wells over there and that was created with an agreement through the JDA, Joint Development Authority down in Savannah. And those lines are under construction now, expected early two thousand and twenty-five. We're going to have a water tower, it's a three or five million gallon water tower on-site to meet that demand until we can get this done. And then the transportation, if you're familiar with that area, that's the site. They're putting in a new interchange right before you get to it. They're going to have five roundabouts when you get off of the exit there now. It's there now to keep traffic flowing. And they're talking about a rare entrance, a back entrance to the site at some point. So it's, it's, again, it's a lot of work. South Exert Road is done. There's a temporary road there, but now it's done, it's paved, it's, it's operational. And again, the workforce, so you see here, the workforce, it's going to reach Glen County, I believe. There's, you know, Savannah's got about seven hundred thousand people in it. We have agreements with Savannah Tech, some of the other colleges there. We just started a quick start center on the site to train these folks. And these jobs start at about sixty thousand dollars a year for just an employee, you know, on the assembly line. So, yeah, so we're going to, we did a workforce study. Again, I think where Glen County comes in again is we're going to have a deficit, you can see the bottom couple lines there, of twenty-two hundred employees in two thousand and twenty-seven. So we're really looking at workforce development and also workforce housing in the area to make sure we can meet the demands that they say, but we're going to be short a little bit again. I, I don't see, I tell people all the time in Atlanta, if you drive an hour and a half during traffic, you may get twenty miles. You drive an hour and a half, that's from here to that site. It's not a bad, it's all interstate. So I think, I think there's a lot of good things to come in our region, again, including Glen, all the way out to Vidalia, Tooms County. Dublin just landed, uh, something up there, uh, I think it was, I forgot what it was now, but they, one of the suppliers up there. So that's what, that's, that's what we got going on the head in Bryan County, just a little bit. And that's just the site. But we have, uh, there's, I had another slide here, you know, we've created about seven or eight thousand jobs outside of Hyundai in the last couple of years. So we've created a lot of jobs down there. I think that was the last slide on that. Yeah, so if anybody has any questions, feel free to ask.
What is your population in Bryan County?
Right now, we're about forty-five to forty-eight thousand.
And you're anticipating your growth to be?
We'll probably, yeah, we'll probably be at sixty thousand, yeah.
Fifty percent increase?
Yeah, fifty, well, we'll be at fifty percent increase in the next four, five years, absolutely.
Wow, that's amazing.
I know when I got elected, our budget was nineteen million, it's two hundred and sixty-three million now. So it increased the list a little bit too. So, yeah, we're working off of two hundred. And that, that's a lot due to the plant with ARPA funds that we have to account for, a bunch of federal dollars, but still, it's, it's there.
All right, Commissioner, any other questions?
Uh, just keep going and spin what you can down this way.
I, I think y'all are, you know, I think I talk, you know, Commissioner Tossenson a lot. I, I think y'all are in a great spot, I really do. I think if you can, everybody get on the same page, try to find a site that's almost shovel-ready. People will come because they're looking. They're, they're looking for sites, I mean, all these different types of little suppliers, offshore suppliers. I mean, if you can get, you know, a hundred-million-dollar project here, it'd be great. And that's dual.
We hear a lot, uh, out of Bryan County about the ten thousand homes that are needed, ten thousand homes that are coming. Uh, how do you develop workforce housing, uh, in, in the time demand that you, you have?
Well, we're, we're working through that now. You know, workforce housing, land is just so expensive. It went from, you know, eight thousand dollars an acre around that site, now it's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we have to figure out a way, and I'm on a housing, workforce housing study committee with the state. Do you incentivize the builder? Do you incentivize the counties and municipalities who run sewer and water out there? Do you incentivize the home buyers? So we're working through that now. I, I was talking earlier today, you know, there's, there's some projects out there, if they can get the land, they can do workforce housing on it. So we're working through some issues now. I, I think if they can, uh, you know, uh, get our infrastructure out on some of these sites, it'll help. And again, we're working with DCA a lot and, you know, we looked at modular homes, you know, not mobile homes, but modular homes. I think that may be a, may be a solution, uh, but you got to get that land ready to go for that, to bring those houses in and put them up. And, you know, once you build those houses, I, I don't know if y'all seen modular homes. I always use, so my brother lived in one in Charleston, it was two stores, had an elevator, he sold it for a million dollars about, eight, eight years ago. So you really can't tell the difference once it's put together. And they're all built in a controlled environment. I, I think that may be a viable option for somebody to come in and just do, you know, workforce housing, you know, a thousand to fifteen-hundred square foot. And I'm not a, uh, big fan of rental properties because it doesn't do anything for the home buyer. There's no equity to be built. So I, you know, I'd like to see somebody come in and do something. So a twenty-three, a twenty-four-year-old kid can come in, build equity three to five years and move to a different house. That's what I'd like, that's what we're trying to work towards in that county.
How does your EDA play into all this with all the growth that you have?
So, uh, yeah, I, I, I said, our, uh, the Development Authority, I told our person that runs it, I said, your job is to work yourself out of a job. She about did. She about did. But, yeah, I think it plays a vital role. I, I think there has to be a lot of communication between the, the Development Authority and the Board of Commissioners. We have a commissioner that sits on that board and they report back to us. Um, I'm really involved with the CEO of the Development Authority and the chairman of that Development Authority. We share ideas, we talk, I mean, you know, just between us to kind of get some of these things out. Uh, but, but it is critical to have that relationship with your Development Authority. It, it's, it's critical. I, I mean, you know, I, I don't know if you have a member on that board, but you need to have a member on that board to share ideas and bring it back and report to this board when need be. And that's what we do.
What, uh, what role is the mayor playing in this?
The mayor?
Yeah.
Not much. Not much. Because, you know, we're, we're the county, right, the county, and the mayors, we let them know somewhat that they landed in the city of Richmond Hill, actually Hyundai Mobus is, they had a, they have an industrial site there. Hyundai Mobus went there, it was part of the county, but they're in, within the city limits. Out at that new exit eighty-two, that new exit that was built there out there. But, yeah, we, we don't, we, you know, this stuff is all county stuff. You know, Bryan County, by the way, is the only county in the United States split in half, there's two ends and no middle. One-third of the population of the county up in the north end, which where this is at, two-thirds down in the south end.
And it's divided by?
It's split half by Fort Stewart. So you actually have to go through Chatham and Effingham to get to the other end. And the other end, Pembroke, is the county seat.
So you all expect all of the workforce to come from the county?
I, no, I think the workforce is going to come for, for, no, city and county. I, I think Savannah, you're going to see a lot of folks, they're trying to work something out to maybe get some folks to bust them there, back and forth. I think you're going to see people come from Glen County to go there. I mean, think about it, an hour, hour and twenty minutes, you could probably be there. And people will drive that far for a good job, I believe. Dublin, Vidalia, all those areas, they're going to come from, yeah, drive down for this. I mean, it's, it's going to be eighty-five hundred workers at the Hyundai plant, but all the suppliers is about fifteen thousand jobs.
What's your rail service to the site? Railroad service?
There, there's a spur there, it was already there, that was in place. Let me see if I can back up here, I think it's, uh, let's see here. Yeah, this is right, it's right beyond where it says new interchange, it's right, kind of right there. No, but it comes right through there, to that site.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll build, finish building that or they will and they'll be at a rail site. And that goes down to the port. And I'd imagine they're going to probably rail some cars down here and truck, and truck. So, yes, three hundred thousand cars, that's, I think it's twelve hundred a day, I believe. They don't have a test track, you know, it's.
So my family are the ARPA pilot here and the voters, so the, you know, just, you've heard me keep telling y'all all the time, the impact on the ports and the, and the work of the state and the federal government to have additional birth space.
Yeah.
And dredging ready, uh, because all of the cars.
Yeah.
Will go through Brunswick, not just Savannah, but all, all down here.
The Ro-Ro, right, they, they, they moved it all down here.
Right.
So, yes, if you're going to, I mean, you're going to get an economic impact here in Glen County from just that, from just that.
And it's exciting what y'all are doing up there and I, and I'm, and I'm so proud that, uh, you know, we, we will see some impact from that. And I guess, I see, uh, our EDA Director Ryan Moore in, in the room with us, though I know you got your work cut out for us, so you're.
You know Anna, you know Anna, she, she quit. She, she, she went, actually, she went to see that you, uh, Chatham Economic, had to work on workforce development. So it's a great transition for her, I mean, she did a wonderful job for us. But again, we, we, we have a pretty good relationship where, you know, we, we talk and say, hey, you'll keep this to yourself. And I, I think that's what you got to have. And we're, all of us working together made this happen. It wasn't just one, one entity, we all really had, and really with the four counties. JDA, we worked really hard to get it, get it done.
Well, with us being the other port in the state of Georgia and we being a Ro-Ro port.
Yeah.
I can see, I can see an, an impact with that. You, you were showing a circle and I was thinking more that circle could be more of an oblong circle.
Oblong, yeah.
Coming down from where you are to us.
Right, I know when I was over in, in Alabama where they had Kia, uh, the Hyundai plant over there and the Kia plants in West Point, they were running trucks back and forth all the time. One would take engines and, and then the other one bring transmissions. So they were going back and it's, that's about an hour and a half, two hours away. They did it all day long, just running, going back and forth. So again, you can do that here.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I can't thank you enough for coming and, and taking your time, coming down to Brunswick and, uh, and shared all this with us. It's exciting what you're doing, it makes us exciting down here.
I think y'all are in a great, I think you're in a great spot again, I, I really do believe that because it's, Chatham County, I mean, we're full. You know, I used to tell Anna, I said, we're full, Anna, quit bringing stuff here. Go take it, share the love somewhere, so.
So y'all are not looking for any newer industry in, in Bryan County? Y'all are more looking into, uh, your housing and workforce?
Housing, workforce, yes, kind of like, we did catch, the dog caught the car, right? We really caught the car. So we're, you know, we, but we are still, we still have a little bit of land left there and they're looking at buying some new land, I mean, uh, some more land, excuse me. But, yeah, so they, uh, yeah, we're just, like I said, we really need to focus on our workforce housing and really bringing that commercial aspect in and maybe not head like this big projects, but some commercial, even some retail and then housing. And, and I, I believe that the Development Authority could, could help us with that.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir. Uh, this is Commissioner Clark, he is joining us by team.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, what other, as Hyundai approached y'all about other, um, factories for support, you know, other, um, things that they'll need, that's, uh, because like you said, they're running out of land up there. Is there anything that we should be on the lookout for, possibly have an opportunity for, uh, you know, a small warehouse or whatever we could do to, uh, support this plant?
Well, you know, they do, they, we, they've come to the JDA and asked around and I, they, they've got it. I, I think working with your economic development folks, I mean, that's going to be key to do that and keep an eye out. There's a regional, what is it, the regional, like, I think we were talking about Charlie, it's about seven. I, I think working with your economic development folks, I mean, that's gonna be key to do that, and keep an eye out, there's a regional one, what is it, the regional, like, it's, I think you were talking about Channing, it's about seven or eight counties around, what is it? Okay, okay, yeah, so that, that will be, you know, and that we, you know, because Anna was wanting to get out of that, so we need to be in it, really to let these others, like, y'all know, right, what's, what's there, what's needed. And we can, we can definitely kind of steer some folks down this way. Yes, sir, but the main, the tier-one suppliers are here, but now you're gonna get some offshoots of those.
Yeah, understood, thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right, Commissioner, anything else? Again, Chairman Infiger, thank you so much for taking your time to come share good news with us.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you, have a good day. Item number three today is to receive a virtual presentation from the Department of Community, excuse me, Department of Community Affairs regarding the Plan First application opportunity. And we have our, uh, Stephanie Leaf with us today, thank you, Stephanie.
Yeah, thank you, good afternoon, Commissioner Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. Uh, so what we wanted to do today was just introduce you to a program that is run by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, it's called Plan First. And to the best of our knowledge, Glen County has not been part of this program in the past. Um, basically, in a nutshell, it, uh, is a recognition of the county or any community, so the city or county's commitment to implementing their comprehensive plan. Um, and so we thought the timing was really good to check into this program, uh, we adopted our new comp, or updated comprehensive plan in October twenty twenty-three. And of course, the county's underway implementing a strategic plan, and there's a number of initiatives in that strategic plan that are connected to our comprehensive plan and our community work program as part of that plan. Um, so today, uh, joining us virtually is Daniel Gaddis, he's the Outreach Coordinator with the Department of Community Affairs. And he'll be introducing you to the program, um, and letting you know more about it, and answering questions for you. And just also with timing, uh, there is a May application deadline, so that's why I wanted to bring this, um, to you now, to see if there's some interest in the county applying to it. Uh, you'll learn a little bit more about it, so, at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Gaddis.
Thank you, Steph.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank y'all for having me today, uh, as a point of personal privilege, I especially thank you all for getting that bridge over to the tidal pool. I've spent last decade or so about once a year carrying chairs and that cooler over that very pool of parking in Massengale Park, so excited to get the opportunity to, to walk over that bridge, so. Uh, my name is Daniel Gaddis, as already mentioned, I am the Planning Outreach Coordinator with DCA, I joined in November of last year. Uh, my professional career is to spend some time as a planner and economic development project manager in the metro Atlanta area. And as well as working as a consultant with some, uh, with the TBA. We are very excited about the Plan First program for this year, lots of great things are happening, our application is live on our website. And we just had our Planning Day at the Capitol, uh, just last week, actually, for our newest class of Plan First communities. And then we've had a series of webinars, uh, one of which Stephanie attended and, uh, thought this would be a good idea for Glen County to consider, and that's why I'm here in front of you today.
All right.
What is Plan, what is Plan First, can y'all see my screen okay?
Yes, yes, sir, yes.
All right, well, put simply, a Plan First community is one that is recognized by, by State of Georgia's Department of Community Affairs for implementing their comprehensive plan in an exemplary way. It's a recognition and a reward for those communities for their excellent work. Through a community's goals, leadership, public participation, and implementation of their plan. Communities that are designated Plan First communities are going above and beyond what is required to make sure that they are keeping effective planning a high priority. Well, why would you want to participate? There are several great reasons to apply, each of which may be different for different communities. That last circle there with that new star is a new incentive that has recently been offered as of December of twenty twenty-three, and it's one that we're very excited about. We've been hearing a lot about, um, affordable housing and the crisis that's taken over this country in terms of, uh, that, that, that high cost. And we're, we're trying to meet that need here. So if you're a Plan First community, uh, for both the four percent and the nine percent low-income housing tax credits. If a proposed development falls within the boundaries of a Plan First community, it is eligible for an additional three points. And, uh, if, if, if Glen County's a community where the housing authority or the, the local governments are working with developers to address the housing shortages. Then applying for the Plan First designation may very well be the, be worth the effort just for these additional three points. Oftentimes, these applications are decided by fractions of a point. What are some other benefits? As we think about the suite of the benefits that are available to, to Plan First communities, the architects of this program, and back in twenty fourteen. Inserted benefits for communities of all sizes, needs, and demographics. We know that Georgia's communities are diverse, and we have reflected that diversity in these, in this program's design and benefits. Number one, statewide recognition by DCA. The use of the Plan First logo, announcements on the website and DCA's social media, an invitation to the planning, to the Capitol, for Planning Day at the Capitol. Recognition by the State Senate and the State House on, for resolutions honoring your community. And, uh, in years past, we've had photo opportunities with Governor Kemp. We also want to tout your successes and tell your story from the state, uh, platform. We'd like, uh, our Plan First communities to submit a success story, and it's where we have the opportunity to share what you're doing in your community with other people across the state. That can look like a housing project, a stormwater infrastructure improvement, or a floating bridge over a tidal pool. We want to celebrate your successes at the state level, and we want to invite the communities to learn about what you did to overcome those challenges. This next bullet here is eligibility to apply every year for community development block grant. If you're in a non-entitlement community, you have access to apply for CDBG funds every other year. But if you're a Plan First community, you have access to apply annually in the three-year period that you're a Plan First community. Already mentioned the three bonus points for Lytech, again, that's applicable for both the four percent and the nine percent housing tax credit applications. There are several loans, uh, that are offered through DCA, one is the Employment Incentive Program, also the Redevelopment Fund Program. Additionally, the Downtown Development Revolving Loan Fund Program, and if you're a Plan First community, you receive a one percent reduction on those interest rates for, for all of those. This is a big deal here, you get access to JIFA, that's Georgia Environmental Finance Authority, state loans at an interest rate that's reduced by half a percent. And as example of this benefit, the interest rate savings on a twenty-year water or sewer loan of two hundred thousand dollars would be just over thirteen thousand dollars. Again, that half a percent reduction is for being a Plan First community. We also have twice a year a, uh, a Community Planning Institute aimed at planning commissioners, local elected officials, and planning staff. And if you are a Plan First community, you receive two free registrations for those events. If you're more of a visual learner, here's some information on these benefits. Like I said before, we've encouraged the use of the Plan First logo in, uh, email badges as well as websites, and there you see one from the city of Grove Town. We're hopeful that this will spark a conversation about what it means to be planned first, and that there can be some learnings and being shared within communities around the state. So we mentioned that the Planning Day at the Capitol happened last week, this is a benefit that falls into that recognition piece. This is a picture from just last week, and the communities, the newly designated communities of Bainbridge, Hawkinsville, Marietta, and Perry. Uh, came to the Capitol, and our Commissioner Christopher Nunn is holding a Senate resolution honoring those communities on the bottom picture. We did have the pleasure of our, uh, State Senator from Perry, Larry Walker, to join us to read the resolution, um, that honors all our, all of our new Plan First designees. Currently, there are twenty-five active Plan First communities. Uh, just as a reminder, this Plan First designation does last for three years, and I went through and looked at, um, the Plan First communities that we've had since the creation. And we've only, uh, had one coastal Georgia community recognized, and that's Liberty County, and that was from the years twenty sixteen through twenty twenty-one. So they did renew their designation, but have not been a, an active Plan First community since twenty twenty-one. Uh, a little bit closer proximity to y'all, um, s, s, in the southern Georgia region. Cook County is an active Plan First community, the city of Douglas is an active Plan First community. Fitzgerald was, uh, from twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-one. Tifton is a, uh, uh, Tifton has been from twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-three, and the city of Waycross, uh, from twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-four. So that's currently where we sit with Southern Georgia, um, Plan First communities. Well, you might be wondering, how, how would you participate? Well, there are some restrictions, and it's according to when you submit your comprehensive plan, according to the deadlines. In addition to submitting your service delivery strategy, uh, has to be, you have to be completely in compliance with all planning deadlines with our, with our office. And it actually looks back a period of ten years. So mostly, this program is about the comprehensive plan, so meeting those deadlines, particularly with the comprehensive plan, is key to your eligibility. Well, the application, I won't go into too much detail, but the application is robust, it's a very competitive application, uh, but it's organized into four major buckets. Goals, leadership, participation, and implementation, and we'll talk about those briefly. For the goals section, we're wanting to know if your community has commute, uh, do the goals of your comprehensive plan have community and leadership support? Is your community reaching for aspirational and ambitious goals? Are they achievable? Do these goals in your comprehensive plan actually move the needle on decision-making? And we're asking about consistent progress on your goals. Regarding leadership, we want to know how is planning done effectively within your local government? What is the staff makeup? Is the planning commission active? Are local officials going out and getting the recommended training from GMA, ACCG, and, uh, DCA and others? Carl Benson. Are community leaders being brought to the table in your community? For participation, we want to know how is the community being engaged? Do you have any innovative practices? Is the community input actually being incorporated, or is just another example of tokenism? Lastly, on implementation, we want to know how effective has your local government been with implementation? Have you guys been consistently finishing planned projects? And on the application, are you highlighting recent projects that, once again, align with the comprehensive plan? And I, I know, um, I know you all have access to this, I won't, I won't read all of these, but these are just some tips and tricks for the, for a, a great application. Every, these questions are multi-part, please answer the full question, uh, this is mostly about the comprehensive plan. Uh, reference the plan with your correct section. Have lots of stor, have lots of images, we all know that stories resonate better when accompanied by images, and if you have a new park, or streetscaping, or new innovative downtown project, show them to us. If you've got stormwater improvements, we'd like to see your sewers. Uh, most of the reviewers of these applications, they can't go to, in person to your community, so tell us and show us. We encourage you all to revisit the application throughout the year, um, allow the application to provide ideas for your community's implementation. It is a big application, so we do ask you to start early, just like we were, when we were in school, we can all tell when a test or a paper was part of a cram session from the night before. So allow several weeks to gather the information that you need. Also, allow your community staff and, and people, elected officials, to review the application in advance. This will help your answers be more focused, and will result in a better product. And that brings me to the final, uh, tip here on this page, which is examples. This is a make or break point on these applications. After reviewing several applications from all over the state, uh, one of the biggest positives and negatives are examples. When the examples are not provided, reviewers tend to score very negatively. Uh, when quality examples are provided, reviewers do take note and they score much higher. So just as a note, you probably won't be recognized as a Plan First community if quality examples are not provided. And I've already mentioned, um, we know that y'all are doing great things, we want, just tell us through pictures, uh, in addition to what you, what you write, so, um, there's that tip. I do want to talk about a success story, one of our communities in South Georgia that, that I'd like to talk about is the city of Douglas. For those of y'all that don't know, it's a small town, rural town of roughly twelve thousand, it's the county seat of Coffee County. And it's one of the few three-time Plan First designees in the state. And you can see that they really took advantage of these community development block grant economic development funds. Remember, with Plan First, you have access every year to apply for CDBG funds. And you can see that they took advantage of, of three successive years. They took a short breather in twenty twenty-one, but then in twenty twenty-two, they expanded their Head Start facility, and they invested in the youth of their community. In that same year, Douglas, uh, Douglas took advantage of that half percent interest rate on a three million dollar JIFA loan. And they're gonna perceive benefits of roughly a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in interest savings. Douglas has been extremely active, even outside of these Plan First funds. And they are really demonstrating how local government can push activities that align with their comprehensive plan. This is a, this is a project used with CDBG funds, sewer and, uh, street improvements in Douglas. And then the city of Douglas recognized that, like many communities in our state, substance abuse and mental health issues were challenges. For their twenty twenty CDBG funds, Douglas was awarded seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build a mental health substance abuse facility. To address these issues, estimated to benefit roughly nine hundred and fifty-one people. The city, local employers, and most importantly, the residents, all stand to gain from this facility and the services it offers. So that's it for me, and I just want to op, open this opportunity to you all, if you have any questions or concerns or clarifications needed.
Thank you, Mr. Gaddis, uh, Commissioners, are there any questions?
Got some, but we'll follow up on email with you.
All right.
All right.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right, uh, anyone else? Thank you, thank you again for this, we appreciate your time and, uh, and this presentation, thank you so much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Item number four today is a discussion of the twenty thirty through twenty thirty-five expansion planning for the Public Library Service in Glen County. And we have with us today Ms. Mullis.
Hey, good afternoon.
Brightest face in the room, thank you.
Um, and with me today is also Peggy Herman, who is on the library board, if you can get a little way. Um, and I am here to also talk about some planning, a little further out, but, um, it's actually twenty, excuse me, that should be twenty thirty to twenty thirty-five. But we started this in twenty twenty-three, because, let me tell you first a little, some fun facts about the library, we had a great year. I don't know if y'all remember, but we were Library of the Year, too, so I'm going to say that to my grave, like, you know, I'm gonna pipe right up and be like, yep, we won Library of the Year. So we are back to pre-COVID statistics, love, everybody loves us, it's amazing, we love everybody. And we have been working since twenty twenty-three on our strategic plan, which ends in twenty twenty-five. And the big, uh, item circle that we're working on this year is create a plan to identify the location of additional traditional library facilities. Which brings me to your plan, or our plan for the county, which is the comprehensive plan. And if y'all notice in there, part of it is improvements in the library. So we've known for a while that, uh, our population, and that's what, I'm gonna show you this lovely chalkboard right here, our population. It's time for another library facility, so there is a formula, and as you can see from this, our square footage. So currently, right now, it is at forty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven. Forty thousand of that is at the Brunswick Library, and a little over four thousand is at the St. Simon's Library. So the, um, we are still a little bit low, but when we get to twenty thirty, we need, will need an additional, a little over eight thousand square feet. So the state, um, has, likes to see, um, neighborhood libraries at about six thousand square feet. And so if you do the math, eight thousand square feet is another library in, uh, twenty thirty. And then a little over ten thousand square feet, it's actually a pretty large facility by twenty thirty-five, and that's where. And then a little over ten thousand square feet, it's actually a pretty large facility by twenty thirty five, and that's where our population is. So again, not making this up, these are things that y'all already know from your comprehensive plan that are coming down the pipe. But the question is, where would the new facility go? So we've got a couple of different options. One, first, I'm gonna show you our library cards by, uh, zip code. So as you can see, we've got twenty seven percent of our card, current cardholders, this is as of this week. Are in the city of Brunswick. Twenty six are in St. Simons. Uh, fourteen percent is South Glen, two percent is Jekyll, four percent is other. So you think about some of our cardholders that are college students that come down through here, as well as some of our. Outside, out of town visitors that pay for cards. But twenty seven percent is in North Glen. So also, when you turn back to the comprehensive plan. We know that North Glen is booming and there's already plans in set. So where does it go? Most likely, North Glen. So, and this is something else too, for the last ten years, we have been asking our patrons on our patron satisfaction survey. If their location serves them well, we are constantly giving. We need something out in North Glen, including just on our twenty twenty four patron satisfaction survey, which. Have this lovely one of better hours in near exit thirty eight would be good. Thank you. So not just us, not just your comprehensive plan. Not, it is also your citizens that are wanting a third library location in North Glen. But wait, there's another opportunity. And if you see, St. Simons has that twenty six percent. Well, St. Simons is at four thousand square feet. The average neighborhood library is six thousand square feet. The comprehensive plan also talks about St. Simons being, uh, having additional development north end. Of course, you know, that would be awesome, but we do already have a library on the island. But it's not big enough. But that building was redone in two thousand and six. It's about to be twenty years old. So it's probably time to redo the casino building. And with it, a lot has changed since that renovation in HVAC. And in the usage of the facility, so there could be ways to actually master plan it out. To give us just a little more space. As well as, as you can see from our patron satisfaction survey, this, um, kind patron said. For me personally, I can only come with my family on Wednesday after hours, uh, times or Saturdays. The other hours for most people are work hours too. Please click the late hours Wednesday and open Saturday. We love coming on the weekends. So at this particular facility, y'all are all very familiar with the casino and how beautiful it is. And that the front door to the St. Simons Library opens into the atrium. We love it, however, that atrium is used pretty much every weekend. Especially in the afternoons, once wedding season starts. And so we close the building at one. That's because we don't want to interrupt people's events. And also, it's really hard for patrons to still get into the building when there are events. So we try to, uh, accommodate everybody. But if we renovate that building, it's, we could move the front door. And then we could open up hours. And this particular thing, just like we need a building in, on, uh, North Glen, is on our patron satisfaction survey for ten years. So is opening up the St. Simons Library on Saturday. Ten years. They just want a little more time. How lovely is that? I'm so proud to be part of the place where they're like, we want you open more. Yes, and that's why I'm talking to y'all. So here would be the project timeline if we could make it all work. So twenty twenty four, obviously, we're around eighty six thousand, uh, population, so planning begins. That's me coming to talk to you today, talking to people in our community. We will begin next year, starting to work on the library strategic plan, which will include more of this. Then in twenty twenty six, requesting money from you guys for actual planning. Master planning for renovation of the casino building, and then also facility planning for Northland. So then that way, because by twenty twenty six, hopefully, we've all kind of figured out a little bit more because. You know what goes really well with a library? Other county public buildings, parks, police stations, all those things that you need. Uh, and then by twenty twenty eight, really talking about design renovation plans with construction. And renovation twenty twenty nine in hopes that the buildings are done in twenty thirty to twenty thirty five. So we meet that need of when the population will be here. So something else that's on this list, we come with money. So the state has a program called, um, MRR, which is major renovation and repairs. Where I can get funding to help pay for that planning. The key of it is that St. Simons has to be part of this. Then for the actual building, we can get up to three million dollars in matching funds for building. And that's both. That's not one project altogether. That's six million, three for St. Simons, three for North Glen. So just all those things to think in the back of your head, cause I know this is a little far out. But I do love to plan, which is why this game's been so much fun. But, uh, I'm gonna end with, it has been a little over four and a half years. Since I've last come to the county commission talking about buildings, which was when we redid the Brunswick Library. And that's because that little nugget that's in this picture checking out books. The first nugget to check out books at the new St. Simons Island, uh, self-check is mine. And she was in my belly when I talked to y'all last. That's Collins Mullis. And she's four and a half and she's at, in pre-K. And then I can't leave it without my oldest, that's Maggie. Ta-da! It's her little dance picture. Oh my gosh, she's in tap. She broke her arm, poor thing. But, uh, so she's six and a half. So the irony is, uh, I also, the first time I ever talked to y'all about funding for, uh, the Brunswick Library. She was in my belly. So thank you, guys. Do y'all have any questions?
Any discussion for now?
Sounds just like my aunt. Who was the librarian at St. Simon's Library for thirty five years?
Yep.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Well, no, we still, we have a picture of Ms. Ledbetter.
Matthew and I know about that.
And the bell, we saw the bell. So, but, uh, thank you, guys. We really do appreciate everything that the county does for the libraries and how much love we have. Because we would not be where we are without Glen County. And so our wins, I hope that y'all take them as your wins too. Thank you, guys. And I'll see you in, in about a year.
All right.
Bye.
All right. Uh, the last item on our agenda today is to receive an update on the county's cell phone policy, and, uh, we have Mr. West with us. We'll, we'll receive an update.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. David West, CIO in the IT department. And, um, unfortunately, I've been selected to update this highly contentious topic. So give you a little background on how we got where we are with the cell phones. Historically, public safety communicated with radios and some technical members and, and. Leaders had to be, you know, had to get in touch with them, and so we had BlackBerrys originally. And then the iPhone came about and the Androids came about and text messaging came about, so it pushed it all, you know, into the future. And so leadership at the time decided we would do a stipends. And provide, you know, the, the members that were expected to be on call or, you know, had twenty-four seven basically available. So you were able to get your own device with that stipends. And it worked, it worked okay, and then, um, then they created FirstNet. And then public safety decided not only could they do radios, but they could also do text messaging and cell phone calls for the public safety members. And so, I think it was twenty eighteen, we started, uh, providing public safety, uh, employees. A FirstNet phone. Then Verizon created their version of, of an emergency or a precedence, uh, level cell phone device. Verizon got into the picture. Then the public safety could choose between either a iPhone with, uh. With Verizon or iPhone with, with public safety through FirstNet. It's very confusing. And then we had members that, you know, you get the stipends, what you're trying to get in touch with them and they say, no, this is my personal device. And I'm not gonna communicate on that, but yet you're giving them a, a stipends. So it's just created a lot of amb, ambiguity for staff to get in touch with people. So there's a number of reasons we're, we're recommending to, you know, dissolve the stipends and go with the county provided device. The first, this is, I'll give you some pros and cons of each. The first pro is security. With cyber events happening constantly, we don't know when somebody has a personal cell phone, what apps they have on there. Do they have Venmo that could, you know, they could be vulnerable to having their money taken or, or, you know, open up. Uh, the county to, you know, to, to issues with unauthorized apps that we have no idea because it's a personal device. Uh, and when, when, uh, an open records request comes in or a FOA, we have to provide that information. But yet the individual says, no, this is my personal cell phone. And so there's confusion there. How, how do you address that? So we need clarity. Is this a business device? Is it a personal device? And so, uh, going to a county provided device, that will clear that up substantially. We can monitor the cell phone usage if we provide that cell phone. We can control what software is on that device. Right now, they can download any app they want on their personal cell phone and then get county email on that same device. And then where is, you know, there's some security issues there. Additionally, if we, if we dissolve the, the stipends, we estimate to save eighteen thousand dollars annually. Because, uh, getting rid of the hotspots, the cell phone pr, that provided by the county can actually act, act as a hotspot. And so a couple of cons though, the, the staff will have to carry two devices, and that's, you know, nobody wants to carry two devices. But unfortunately, you know, you have a business device and a personal device at that point. Privacy, there's no expectation of privacy when you're on a county provided cell phone. And well, it, av, obviously it'll create more work for, for the IT staff because we have to manage the devices. But there will be clarity because it's a county provided device instead of employees showing up with a personal device. And we're supposed to work on, on a personal device. And then upgrade cost. Cell phone and technologies change consistently, consistently. We'll have to budget for some upgrade costs. Cause every couple of years, we're gonna go through a newer device being needed to put into the fleet. Now, that's just kind of a, a brief overview, and I, from there, I'll, I'll, I'll take your questions.
We switch over to this, uh, I know we're constantly having to change our password or our user numbers and all, will that still be a?
Yes, and that will still happen. We'll still have Duo. But, um, yeah, unfortunately, that's the world we live in now. You know, we will have passwords, mandatory password changes will be pushed out consistently.
So these new, these phones that you're wanting us to have, uh, won't eliminate that?
No, sir. No, sir. No, you'll still be an iPhone or an Android of your choice, but unfortunately, we, it's not gonna change that.
How much is it gonna cost to supply staff with all these phones? Staff, uh, countywide?
Well, I think it's typically forty-two dollars per device in, uh, monthly that, that we. And you multiply that, so currently we have. A hundred, I believe, Verizon and two hundred fifty-two, uh, FirstNet. So times forty-two, if somebody has a calculator, could quickly get that, uh. That would be the estimate, and we have some hotspots as well.
Does the phones cost?
Hey, this is Tamara. Um, can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you.
Um, um, I spoke with James and he stated that our contract, um, allows us to get devices for one dollar. So because we have so many phones on the, on those, um, contracts, we're able to get the devices basically for free.
Just not the recurring, you still have the recurring at forty-two dollars, right, Tamara?
Correct. The forty-two dollars is, is the, uh, the monthly cell plan cost. Right.
Is that unlimited?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And we'll have a hotspot within the, uh, the device, so we'll be able to eliminate many of the hotspots.
I mean, how many, uh, current people that this will impact already have two phones? Such as myself, I already have two phones and now I'm gonna have a nine hundred dollar paperweight. How many, uh, other folks are like that? Do we know?
I don't have the exact, I don't have the exact number of who currently has two phones. I don't, uh, I can get that for you.
Okay.
So the, the folks that already have two phones and are already on the county plan do not get a stipend. So those people won't be affected. Um, in your case, you would end up with three phones if, if you already, if you have one for your business. And, and one personal, and then you had a county phone that would give you three phones. Um, and I, um, but as far as, as far as the county goes, it will, if you have a county phone, you don't get a stipend.
Currently, currently, there are, there are a hundred and thirty-four that are still receiving the stipends.
Yeah, the reason I ask is I would like my phone, and I, like I said, I'm speaking, I'm trying to save folks money. I've got a phone that I only use for county, uh, no apps, no anything else, and I have my personal phone. You know, I'm just trying to see, you know, is there a possibility of still using the phone I've got? But I was told last week I'll have to give this phone up and then get the phone from the county. So basically, I have a phone I bought that I have no use for anymore.
Yes, sir. We're, we're aware of that, and Mr. Fallon and, and Tamara as well, they. They said to be cognizant of, of that and to try to work with the individuals that may have signed a new contract. Uh, we're going to try to work with the individuals that are, you know, freshly into a new contract.
Okay, and I have also received at least three calls from certain folks that'll be getting these and they, they're emphatic. They do not want to carry two phones.
Yes, sir.
So just throwing it out there, I don't know, I don't know if the other commissioners have, uh, had that from other folks, but I have had that, so.
Yes, we, we.
Yeah, I, we understand and we definitely took that into consideration when we were discussing this. Um, but, um, with the current security environment that we're in, we believe that, that that has to take precedence over. The minor inconvenience of carrying two phones. Um, I do, myself am not thrilled about having to carry two phones, but i- it's just part of the world we live in now. Um, so, you know, we, we do hear you and we do understand it is, um, you know, quite a headache. Um, but we may be able to assist with, with some of those things, um.
Yeah.
In the future, with, by possibly, you know, doing some creative IT work on those phones.
Good. And one last ques, question, I promise. Um, does this make us more secure or less secure with additional phones out there? And we all know they're portals. And to me, tell me if I'm wrong, this creates more portals for the bad characters out there. Does it make us safer?
Uh, I believe it makes it safer because we can one hundred percent control what is authorized on that device. Currently, we cannot with a, a personal device with county business on it. Say county email is on a personal phone and you load some TikTok, you know, TikTok's in the news a lot today. And if you have TikTok, who knows what PII they're, they're, they're getting from you. And, you know, what county assets are being vulnerable to that. So it will definitely secure, we can control and authorize what is permitted to be on that device.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, so Commissioners, any other?
I'm just gonna open a belt company that can carry.
Carry, carry all the devices, yeah. Any other comment? Mr. West, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate that. I, I know, uh, we're, we're live streamed, so. Some of the people on the phone calls that we've gotten about this, they'll be able to get your update via, via the stream and. And on our county website to maybe get a better understanding.
Thank you.
Mr. Attorney, any call for executive session today? All right, uh, any other business to come before us today? Entertain a motion?
Chairman to make a motion, we adjourn. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Tosterson, a second by Commissioner Booker to adjourn all in favor. Say aye. That is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Clark for joining us online, and we stand adjourned.